I'd be saying this meeting's adjourned. It really do happen quick sometimes. But the important part of this meeting tonight is that we are introducing to the public and to you who are here, who will be first to the public, the new 2008 county SLOST. We've all heard of the name SLOST, and I'm not going to bore you with a lot of the details, except it just makes the SLOST which stands for Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. And there's three kinds of sales tax in the county. The state of Georgia has 4%, and the county has 3%. So any time you buy anything in this county, and it's been that way for several years, you pay 7% sales tax. That is not going to change. But because of the way the law's written, every few years, we have to renew those by the voter's approval. It keeps the county commissioners straight, keeps the school board straight, and our job is, my job, is to explain it to you, but my job is not and cannot be to promote it. So others who think it might be a good idea, if they so inclined to promote it, then that's, I can't say anything against that, but I can't promote it. I can only give you the bare facts about it. And you know that you better not say that. So we've got three taxes, and I want to explain it to you. We've got, number one's a LOST, L-O-S-T, Local Option Sales Tax. And that's a tax, a sales tax, the one penny that's been in effect for many years in the county. You never have to vote on it. It's always there. It's something the legislature passed, and it is responsible for taking the direct amount of money off of your property tax. So this one penny that we'll take, the LOST tax, comes directly out of your property tax bill. And just to give you an example, this current year taxes, we received $3,015,000 from this tax, which cut our millage rate from, our millage rate is 5.05, but it would've been 7. something anyway. It's 2.36 mills are 48% property tax reduction. So if it were not for this one penny for the LOST, our property taxes would be 48% more than they are now. So take a big look on that, how bad that would be. So that's the first tax, and it's always there. Then the other two are SLOST and ESLOST. Simply put, E is for education, SLOST, which is the one we just voted on last week, it passed, and ours is just called SLOST, and that's for the county as a whole. And so what the county has to do is determine what projects we think are worthy to present to you, the taxpayers, to let you know what we're going to spend the money on. And then we go to the voters on February the 5th, same time we have a presidential preference primary, and we in turn will vote on that SLOST at that time. I told you before, it's just a continuation of existing tax. They may have to use that word "tax," which I like to, it's just a sale, 1% sales feature. There's a new program started this year, or actually started a couple of years ago, and it allows you to do a SLOST for six years instead of five. Typically, there are five-year cycles, and every five years, you have to re-vote for them. This time, we're going with a six-year program. It's easier to work with, and the main purpose of it, it also brings the city into the equation. I have to work with the city, and we have to agree on what they're going to get for their project. So we've done that this time, and the city and the county have agreed on the project and the amount of money that we're going to let them collect out of this as well. And then we base how much money we're going to collect on the history of our sales tax prior to that. So what our people that are helping with this, that are smarter than we are, they calculate what our sales tax increase has been over the last five years. We've been very fortunate in this county now. Currently, this year, we're having a slight decrease, but it's not major yet. We realize that next year, it may become major, and if the economy doesn't pick up, it's very possible our sales tax could drop more, but we're trying to take all that into account. But over the last five years, we have averaged a 13% increase per year, which is phenomenal. We have an option, yes, I have the option as commissioner, to determine what we want to base our next six years on. And so we've got a choice from 0% growth to 30% growth. And what we try to take is a conservative but progressive response to that, which we determine to be 7.5%. We feel comfortable that over the next six years, we'll average 7.5% per year. And we are not counting on, nor are we relying on, a watermark, but we know that a watermark, if nothing happens, will be a part of our future. If that's the case, we should easily exceed our projections. But even without them, and that's what we're considering, we came up with a 7.5%. That means over the next six years, on the 1% SLOST, we're going to collect $31,500,000. And that's a lot of money for a little county like this. And it's an unbelievable circumstance that we have the opportunity to do something like this and to continually do other things for the community. One question that comes up, well, if you build all these buildings and this new stuff, then we're going, the property taxes are going to have to keep them up. Sometimes that's the case, but we don't think that's going to be the case, and as I go over the projects, I think you'll understand more. One of the biggest things and the biggest purposes when we started sitting down is trying to come up with the projects that we needed in the county, is we know what kind of recession the county's in right now. And a lot of you may not be aware of really how bad it is if you've got a government job or if you've got a, I guess, any kind of job with a regular salary. You're not impacted, but if you're in the construction industry particularly, whether it be building, a heavy equipment user, carpenter, plumber, electrician, these guys have had work at the zoo for the last 10 years, but all of a sudden, it's dried up. And there's still a few that have some work right now, but there's a lot that have been laid off, and there's going to be a lot more laid off if this recession continues through this winter and into next year, as some are predicted. So part of, when I talk to you about these projects tonight, part of this and part of what I hope the county can do, I've had people, and I've read in the paper where people have said, and I've heard where people have said, well, it's time for the county to pull in and tighten up, because times are hard, and not spend money and save money, and not be a burden on the taxpayers. Well, my stated view is that in a time of need like this, it's time for government to step up and try to help, and try to put people to work, and try to do things, not to waste taxpayers' money, but to spend their money as wisely as we can, but to create as many jobs as we can, to try to help promote the economy of our county. And that's what we're trying to do with our SLOST project, and we're proud that it's coming up now, that it's coming up, so that we'll be able to do this. Now, I'm going to go through the projects. I'm not going to give you amounts on all of them. We've got them kind of in categories, so I'm just going to give you an amount, a particular category, and then at some point in the future, we'll be, you know, I'll be going on the road with this show with a PowerPoint, projection, and pictures of everything. But we've been working so hard just to try to get this all ready, under time constraint because of ballot printing, because of statutory requirements of when certain meetings have to be met in order to get it on the ballot, and we're really having to scramble. We're going to make it, but it's been tough, so we haven't had the time to do all the niceties and the frills yet on this project. Number one is roads and bridges. Our projection is going to be we're going to spend $12 million in the next six years on roads and bridges, which is $2 million a year. Now, this is the most important thing to the people that don't want higher property taxes, because this is money we have to spend. And we've got two places to get it. We can get it from property tax, or we can get it from sales tax. Now, this $2 million a year equates to 35% tax rate, so if we, tax increase. So if we did not have the sales tax for some wild reason were not passed, then your property taxes would automatically go up 35% to cover the roads and bridge costs. This is an expense we have to have and can't do without. Not only that, the $12 million that we put in, Department of Transportation matches it with another $12 million, because they want to encourage counties to put money into road work. And so they're going to match that money. So that $12 million that we do ends up being $24 million, which is a huge, huge impact for this county. The next project is one that I hate to mention, I hate to go to, and I hate to talk about, and that's our jail. Our jail was only built five years, four years ago, unfortunately. It had nothing to do with the design or anything with it, and getting it built too small when it was built, it was 48 people, 52 if you include isolation bins. We're averaging right now somewhere between 75 and 90 in our jail. We've got them sleeping all over the floors. We've got a little library room, and it's got four bunks that they sleep in in the library, and three sleep on the floor. It's been a little bitty about the size of a regular cell. And we're right back where we were, and probably in worse shape than we were before they ever even started talking about a new jail in 1995, '96, when we had a joint jail in towns and counties. So we've got $2 million in this SLOST for jail renovation and expansion. I'm hoping that's enough. I want to say for the record, certainly, these numbers that we're giving are estimates. That's all they are and all they can be, because until we go out and hire architects to do plans and get actual bids, we don't know what these things are going to cost, but we're trying to do the best guessing that we can on it at this point. That's $2 million. The old nursing home, which we call the County Annex Building, which used to be the hospital, it actually, part of that building was the first hospital ever built in this county back in the 60s, and they added a wing onto it, and then they added some more wings, they added a few more wings, a few more wings, and it was our hospital for years, and then it became the nursing home for several years, and then, I guess, 10 years ago, maybe, it went to the surplus, and the hospital gave it to the county. So over time, a lot of people have offices in that building. We currently have building inspection, it's late, and I can't think of all his names. We've got the Red Cross in there, we've had the Boy Scouts in there, who else is in there?
You've got the Anti-Drug Coalition, your Veteran Services are in there, Juvenile Justice is in there, the Transportation.
Voting, voting, and 911. So we've got lots of things in that building, and we've got to remodel it. We've got, you know, it's too good a building, it's in terrible shape, but it's too good to tear it down. And so it's going to save a lot of money to work on it. Typically, we'd have to do this with property tax money, because we happen to be lining up with a SLOST, we won't be able to do this with the sales tax money. And we've got a half a million dollars for that estimate, probably be a little bit more. And there are parks and recreation and land acquisition. And I don't want to spend a lot of time in detail, but because this is the first meeting on this, I feel like I do need to bore you a little bit with details. But how many of y'all been to Meeks Park? If you've been in and walked around Meeks Park, you know there's Butter Nut Creek, beautiful creek that runs all the way down Meeks Park. Right across the creek, there's 30 acres that's been there that joins Butter Nut Creek from the highway all the way down to the river, not the river. And the first day I went in office, the first phone call I made when I went in office with those property owners, asking if they considered selling it, and they said, no, they weren't interested. And I have contacted them a few times through the years, no, no. So I took one last stab at it, because the last time I've been contacting them, I've had to be asking them if we could lease it or rent it, or that we couldn't pay for it. And so this time, I said, here's what I think it's worth in this range, we're going to have a SLOST election, this is one and only chance we're going to have to pay you for it, will you consider selling it? And so we have a, we don't have an option signed, but we've got it in the mail to them. We've got a verbal agreement now that they will sell it to the county. So that's awesome, to be able to get that piece of property. We'll be paying, well, I'm not going to disclose that right now, because that's still in the process. And once we got the contract and everything signed and sealed, I'll let you know. It's not, we're not stealing it, they're getting a fair price for it, but we're getting a fair price too, especially where it is. Next thing is what we call North Complex Land. If you don't like recreation, some of these things maybe you don't like. I think, I have to think, recreation is one of the more important things we can do for our public, old man, young, and alive. So you've got Commissioner Blieson Recreation, so he's going to put some recreation projects in here. The North Complex Land, if you go to the Forest Service Office, out 515, across the bridge, which is Cusick Creek Bridge, it's about 25 acres on the left, borders 515, that's owned by TBA and Forest Service. And we don't have control of it, we don't have the opportunity to get it for sure yet, but I've been working for about five years trying to get that piece of property. And the latest that we've gotten, we thought we were going to be able to lease it for a while, a long term lease, but Forest Service has gotten more interested in selling property than giving it away, and they actually can't sell it now. So what we're going to have to do is look for a piece of property to buy, so that we can trade it to them, a piece of property that we can buy that's bordering National Forest somewhere, that we can in turn trade to them for this piece of property. And this is something that probably won't happen, you know, it may or may not even happen in a six-year period, we're going to start on it, but we've got it in our plan, because we're having to look six years down the road. This is 25 acres, lays beautifully, it borders on the lake when we have one, and it also is right across from the industrial park, and it borders 515. And our plan for that park, a ten and under park, only for the small, for the tots up to ten and under, because Meeks Park, y'all been there when it's really busy, it's packed and crammed and overrun, even with this property across the creek. And we don't have a lot of expansion space in Meeks Park, so what we decide to do, if we lucky enough to be able to get some other property, if we can move a little bit of kids out to Meeks Park, have smaller ball fields, smaller soccer fields, smaller football fields, and then have one of those little, can't talk about water right now, we're getting water again, little water park things for the tots, tots getting, you know, with the mushrooms and water coming out, not swimming pools, just a little park. So we've put money in here for, to be able to buy some property, to be able to swap to this property, again, taking long range, and then money in here if we do get the property to be able to develop. And then we've put money in for improvements to the existing Meeks Park. There's a lot of little things that need done. We need the batting cages, we're going to put a roof over the batting cages. I know that sounds silly, because we don't need roofs for anything now, but it will rain again someday, but roofs for the batting cages, we've got to rework some of the buildings, we're going to add other playgrounds for the kids out there, and several other projects, a little more security improvement on our security system a little bit, and several other odds and ends that we're going to be developing. And then one of the big projects that we're looking at for there, and again, this is not one of the high priority projects, but again, we have to think six years down the road, so we have, if we don't put it in here, we can't come back and do it. And this is a amphitheater, covered stage amphitheater area at Meeks Park, at the field where the Highland Games are first. Y'all been in, park the big field down below the road on that bank sloping up there. We're projecting at some point to be able to put a permanent stage there with a permanent roof on it that will be an amphitheater. They've got one similar to what we're looking at in Cherokee, it reaches through these hills if you've been over there. Horse Arena, a lot of people don't know the county even has a horse arena, but we've got one out at Highway 325 and 515, and it's leased to the Saddle Club, and they have horse shows there. 4H also participates out there in horse shows, and they do a lot for kids and adults as well. And there has, it needs a lot of work out there, a lot of improvement, so we're going to be, we put $150,000 over the next five years to be able to go out there and kind of make some improvements each year. Such as community room facility expansion, I don't think anybody's here from Suchas tonight, but they've got a volunteer fire department that's the center of that community in Suchas, and their station is where everybody comes for community functions. And we've got a covered shelter out there that we're using for equipment storage right now, and they've asked, and I'm agreed, we're going to turn that into a community room. So we've got about $150,000 in here to do a community room, and possibly some other minor things over there. Senior Center renovation expansion, again, not a high priority project, it's one we're putting on the list to add on to one of the wings of the senior center as we grow, and we're all getting to that age a little bit quicker than we'd like sometimes, so we certainly want to be thinking about room for expansion of the senior center down the road. And then one pretty important to some people is a library renovation and expansion. And I'm going to ask one of you, are you going to come up, come up and just say just a few words about our library?
Would you not guess, this is what we do, this thing. This is very exciting news for us, because Union County Library is the busiest library in the mountain regional library system, and has always been. I've been working in the library system here for 20 years, and it has always been the busiest. And this quarter, we were just talking about the first quarter of our new fiscal year, we've been averaging more than 400 people a day in the library. And I'm here to tell you, it's just love to death. So it's not just a matter of expansion, it's a matter of fixing some of the things that are wrong with the current building, because Mr. Paris and Larry have been over lots of times looking at our roof and our plumbing and other things that are just worn out, because there's just so many people. It wasn't built for that kind of traffic, and it really just needs to be upgraded. And we're very excited about the possibilities of it. We have an awful lot of people who use our meeting room facilities, 200 to 500 people a month, use the meeting room for a variety of different things. We have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and a lot of children that use those facilities for summer reading programs, and Suzie started some very innovative programming for teens, teen movie nights, and we just outgrown the space. And like Mr. Paris, we can't lobby for the SLOST. When push comes to shove, we're public employees, and we can't lobby for it, but we can make the needs now. And so our libraries are, especially in Union County, are well-used and well-loved and well-supported. We think that we're definitely looking forward to having enough room for the computers and the wiring to support them, and room for the meetings that we know we need to have, and as I say, fixing some of the things that are problems with the current buildings. If we're running out of room for books, when Suzie gets new books, she has to throw away old books, and we don't like to have to completely get rid of our history so quickly. So we are hopeful that this will be successful, and we're really looking forward to it.
They've asked for a long time if we'd be able to build a new library. We just really haven't been able to. And it, you know, it may happen someday, but in the meantime, this is an opportunity to try to add. We're not going to be able to add a huge amount, but we're hoping about 4,000 square feet, 4,500 square feet, be able to stay on that same site. And we've posed about up to $900,000 for that project. I'm going to give y'all this. Public safety, facilities, vehicles, and equipment. We're putting, we used to couldn't do this, we're putting sheriff cars on there, $300,000, because we've always had to buy those out of the budget, general budget, and take that out of property tax. So now, we'll be able to, hopefully, over the next six years, do this out of the sales tax, to again, help alleviate and take the pressure off of property tax. I'm not going to promise you that property taxes are going to go down, but I'm going to promise you that they're not going to go up here as much as they would. But hopefully, we were able to lower them just a little bit this year, and I'm committed to trying to do that next year, and then we'll just have to see how the economy and everything works after that. Fire department, building and equipment, we're putting in some money in case, we don't really need another engine right now, and in case we do, or if we ever get big enough where we have to have a ladder truck, we want to be planning six years ahead, one of the main things we're going to be doing is taking the existing fire station over there and adding a basement and a meeting room on top of it. So the basement will be for increased number of people that'll be able to stay there on duty, and at some point in time, we may even end up with an ambulance over there. So if we do, we've got to have more bunk space, so the basement will increase that, and then we'll have a nice, probably 20 by 40, meeting room on top there all the time, coming over courthouse, or coming here, somewhere, trying to find a place to have a meeting, and hopefully, we can get it where we're going to be able to do that there, because they do a lot of training. Fire trucks, and that's why I asked Brad to come up and say just a word. Fire department came to me about a year ago, and I've had articles in the paper about this, but they came to me requesting a new fire truck for each substation out in the county, the five main stations out in the county, the volunteer stations. Usually, they're always good when they come to me and they have an idea of what to do, but this one was really exceptional, because it came to me, not only tried to sell me on the reason they needed the fire engines, but they were willing to pay for it out of the money that they receive at their stations from donations each year. Of course, knowing that they would have to do that, that means it limits whatever else they can buy for equipment and furnishings. So I knew in the back of my mind that the SLOST was coming up, and I met back with them, I think, maybe a week later, and said, hey, guys, I've got an idea. If you guys order the engines now, and we'll pay the interest on them until we get a SLOST passed and done, then we'll pay them off with the SLOST. So that's what we've done. We ordered five new engines. Each station's got a brand-new engine called Comfort Tanker. And Brad, come on, just a little idea about that.
Yes, Commissioner's generous enough to help us. The tanker that we received is Tanker 3, and it's on the south end of the county, and it is a 2,000-gallon pumper tanker. We can either use it as an engine or a pumper. And just since we've got them, the history on that one, when we received it, we took one of our old engines out of service, and it was a 1974. That sometimes it'd run, sometimes it wouldn't. We were never sure when we'd go get in this truck if we were actually going to go somewhere in it. So now we have a dependable vehicle that we know we can respond to. The first time we had a call to use the tankers was a fire over off Altown Road, and there was, if I remember right, guys, there was two tankers, one engine, well, two engines and two of the new tankers. And just so happened that day, I was running the pumps, and I know for a fact that we went for four hours pumping four lines and never run out of water. For before, something that was very frustrating, you'd be in fighting a fire, almost have the fire knocked down, and you run out of water, because a lot of areas in this county, we don't have fire hydrants. So we have to fight the fire with whatever we bring with us. And before, we were lucky if we had 2,000 or 3,000 gallons on scene. Well, now you show up with three of these tankers, and you've got 6,000 gallons just sitting there, ready to go. So, you know, it's one of those, engines cost a lot of money, and the commissioner was gracious enough to listen to what we had to say, and, because we were willing to try to pay for these trucks out of our donations, and every year, y'all all get those letters that were asking, please help us out, because the county can only do so much. So he's enabled us to even get better quality equipment than we had originally hoped for. And no, these trucks don't run every day, but the days they do run, they could be coming to one of your houses. I mean, just tonight, we were getting ready to come up here and got toned out, and like I said, we're way down at the base of Blood Mountain, Station 3, to come all the way out past Station 2's area off Blue Ridge Highway to help with the fire there. Luckily, before we got there, they got the fire under control, and they didn't need us, but once again, they're in an area where water's not ample, so we need to be able to bring the water with us. And we really need the SLOST to pass to help us finish paying for these trucks, so that we can keep paying for it.
Thank you. These guys do a great job, and what he didn't tell you, not only have they got the 6,000 gallons sitting there on site, but what they had to do, and for one fire, is they showed those three, they got a dump tank, they just dumped their water in it, and they turn around and go to the nearest fire hydrant or lake, and fill up and come back. And so now, anywhere in the county with those trucks, we can furnish. And so now, anywhere in the county with those trucks, we can furnish water just the same as if we got a fire hydrant. So we're going to have the ISO, the insurance company's going to be rerating us pretty soon, and we hope that we'll get a lower rating in a lot of the county.
Also bears to mention that because they were all bought at the same time, they're exactly the same truck. So if you have a policy of firefighter in the one end of the county, well, he could be driving on the opposite end of the county, and a call come in, he could stop at that station, get that truck, and be very familiar with it, because it's the exact same truck. So that was a big issue as far as getting them all the same. The trucks we had before that, every one was different. There was a different type, a different model, and one could be a Ford, one could be a GMC, one could be, you know, a Faircliff Rant, make it all different, whatever you had. And now they're all exactly the same, so anybody can get the same truck. Second to that, they're all automatic now. Instead of having to try to get guys out there that can drive a truck with a stick shift, some people just don't. And nowadays, if you realize it, most people don't drive stick shift cars. They're all automatic. So it's very hard to find people that know how to drive a truck with a stick shift. So again, it's everything better for everybody all around.
Great point. Thank you. Got ambulances on here currently. The county pays the hospital a certain amount of money each year to help them with their ambulance service. So we put this in the SLOST so that we will maybe be able to buy some of the ambulances and trade out, again, to help our property tax. The next one is really one I'm excited about, and it's a solid waste transfer station recycling center, total overhaul. We're going to go over to recycling center. We started a preliminary design, and we're probably going to have two sets of scales. We're going to have a huge shed that will hold two tractor trailers, one on each side, instead of as it is now, one in the back, so that there's plenty of room to get in there with a lot of vehicles and a lot of garbage without it spilling out of the building, out onto the ground out there like it is over there now, a mess. And totally revamping how the recycling works so that you can go separate the commercial traffic from the residential traffic and hopefully limit some of the lines that people have to waver in over there when they go. I think this is going to be a huge benefit. And we're estimating about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. New farmers market and livestock arena in Canterbury. I don't know how many of y'all can. If you've been in my office for the last five years, you've heard more complaining from people because our old cannon plant is getting dilapidated and finally this year died. So nobody's been able to can. A lot of people don't know about it, don't know how. And we think over time, a lot of the people that have moved here that maybe have never can before, we helped to have classes and teach them not only how to grow vegetables, but to can and utilize them. So we'll have a place for a cannon plant. This is going to be a joint project with the school system. They're going to furnish the equipment, we're going to furnish the location for the building. So what this building is going to include will be a livestock arena or a show barn, basically. We've been able to show cattle, sheep. It's not big enough for a horse arena, but it's, what else would you show?
Hogs.
Hogs. Four-H, the Four-H Club and the Cattlemen's Association both do a lot, and this will be a great asset for them. And one of the reasons I'm really pushing it, because I think we need to do anything we can do to promote farming in this county or any county, and keep what farms we've got, because I'll tell you, there is no better green space in the world than to have farms. As hard as it is, young people are not going to be able to buy farms in order to farm. The only hope we've got is the people, families that have farms, that their kids, grandkids, or relatives somehow get into farming. And so anything I feel like the county can do to promote that. And then attached to that arena will be another building that will be, again, we don't have our designs yet, we've just got them in our heads, but it will have a center aisle and open on both ends. So when you come to the farmers market that we have here at the courthouse, not that we didn't mind having one in the courthouse, but this one will be a long so that you can, everybody can back their vehicles into the, from the outside of the building, and then the public can go down the middle and be able to access a lot more vehicles and a lot more product. And when we're not having a farmers market there, then that is also be set up where it'll have portable stalls that will fold them in. So with animals, if they're having a show there, then that's where they'll be able to store their animals. Mickey, somebody has gotten a preliminary design from the state, and they're going to be working with us to develop this and get a bit of property for it. Civic Center renovation and expansion. Y'all been to the Civic Center? You know how much problem we, problem we have with it. It's like the library, we've had leaks and air gone, and that's something we're constantly having to pay out of tax money to maintain and fix up. With this project, we're going to overhaul that place, new heat and air system, which we think will pay for itself, and then about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars estimate for that. We think it'll pay for it system and pay for itself within three years, just because of how old the building is, there's no insulation much in it. So we're going to do all that, just to fix that building up where it'll, because it's a very useful building, functional building, and in good condition, basically, but it's definitely worth repairing in a piece. Having a new multi, well, we're calling it a multi-use building for economic development offices, community center, recreation department, and pro shop. And up at the golf course, I don't know how many people have been up to the golf course, but if you've ever been up there, walk out on the deck of the old pro shop that's there now, clubhouse. It's one of, if not the prettiest view in Union County. And people walk up there, they're just all stressed by it. Again, for economic development purposes, we've been talking about it for a long time. We spent the last year up there redoing the parking lots, moving, not moving the tennis courts, but closing those tennis courts because we'll need that space for parking. Redesigning the parking spaces over there because before, all the parking was real sloped and steep, and we need that to be a problem for people coming up there. So I'm going to, I just had to have a picture of what will be the prettiest building in Union County. And it's done, this is from the golf course, this is from the golf course side. Here's the current clubhouse, which unfortunately is just about had. That's the one building in the county that absolutely is not worth fixing, and it will, it will have to go. But that's where it sits, so this is where the building will sit. Tennis courts, existing tennis court, oh, I'm sorry, the old tennis courts are just to the left of this, and you drive up from the Hollywood Inn on the back side. So this lower side on this end will be the golf course pro shop, and opposite's for recreation department. This side on the bottom coming up the backside, and it's not absolutely for sure, but we're pretty well sure the Chamber of Commerce will be moving up there. And on the top above that, this is part of the building, will be the Union County Development Authority. This whole side here, we have a large overhanging roof with sliding doors all the way across the front, so you've got a public glass front. And when the weather's good, you can roll it, slide them all back. It'll be our about a hundred and twenty to forty seat community rent. It'll be open to the whole public for anything, anything that we'd have a meeting for. It will be absolutely the prettiest place in Union County. We are excited because when you've got industrial prospects or you've got people coming up here looking to move into the county, coming up here in their first impression of Union County is not only they're driving up to a beautiful building, but they walk out that door on the front side or walk those windows, and they're going to see it, one of the most beautiful spots. Plus, we're already paying to maintain it as a golf course, so we don't have any yard work to do. It's done immaculately already, and we think this is going to be a huge asset in drawing. I know there's some people that think we've got enough people, but here again, if you're up here and you're trying to make a living, and you know how things, what happens, we've all seen what happened when the economy stops up here. And it's not a pretty picture, and it's going to be worse. So we don't want to grow, we don't want to outgrow ourselves, but we've got to continue to grow if we're going to have anything and hope that our kids are in this favor. We're in luck because I've got to be somewhere at seven o'clock. It's the longest county meeting on record, I think, already. Renovation of the old courthouse, and you want to come up real quick and say hi? Sam Minsley, you may better know the roots and rations if you've got cable TV, seeing them there playing the mandolin all the time.
Well, that's one of the ways I've...
I'm also the president of the historical society.
I became involved with the Historical Society in the old courthouse way back when Lamar's mother was the president of the Historical Society. The students making quilts to help raise money to save the old courthouse. For a while, it just saved the old courthouse, a lot of people wanted to tear it down and use that space for parking. However, I think most everybody agrees that, especially with the emphasis now on the downtown development, that the old courthouse is an excellent anchor for the community and for the city. And about a block south of there, we have the mountain-like museum, in which we're right now, it's been a big part of my time working on. We've got three new cabins, or not new cabins, really old, but cabins that we moved there and for an eighteen hundreds farm site. And then the mock house, that's also the main part of the museum, will be restored as, I call it early REA by the time when Black Christie came to this area. So...
Yep, thirty seconds.
Oh, man. He's a high-crewed him, he's bored me.
He's talked all night, he just started talking about his...
But the basic thing we're talking about here is, is Lamar's agreed to put some money into the SLOST thing for an elevator in the courthouse. And we are now, we're in our ninth year of, just finished the ninth year of summer concerts, going back to music in the old courthouse, and it's been that way ever since it was first built. But there are a lot of people who would like to go to those concerts, would like to attend other functions in the old courthouse that just can't get up the stairs. I know that you had the recognition of Carville Day, a lot of, a lot of his good friends could not get up there because there was just no way that you can get up if you don't have all your facilities, you just can't get up those steps. So for us, the big thing is to get the elevator in the courthouse, and I will share my thirty minutes right, but it just shows that you can't have, you can't forget the past, and that's what we're trying to do, is people, the people who've always lived here, to keep them remembering the past and people who've come, we appreciate them.
Thank you. We set up a hundred thousand dollars to go, start out at fifty, Sam, but made up a hundred there, we found fifty more somewhere.
That's very nice.
Byron Herbert Reis facility, again, I talked about that earlier, I think, tonight. I've talked so much the last day. They're restoring the farm up there, and this will be helping with the restoration of that. And the old gym, the old middle school gym, we're going to restore it. Again, it's one of those buildings that's old, but it has a heck of a useful life. We examined the structure, it's excellent, it's well-worked, spending the money to restore it, and so that's, that'll be one of the projects. And it will also add a stage, well, it's got a stage on it, but it'll also add a dressing room so that it can be used for plays and small programs up there. So we think that'll be a real asset to the community. Choystoy, if you've been up to Ball Mountain, if you go up one twenty-nine south and turn a left on one eighty goes to Ball Mountain, and right below there is an old schoolhouse. It's a Choystoy Schoolhouse, not sure when it was built, haven't had the time to do my research on that. But it was moved there several years ago in hopes of saving it. And another, there were two buildings. One of those buildings burned, and this one's left, it's in a bad state of decay. Property owners came to me a couple of years ago, said, does the county have an interest in this? Said, you know, I don't know with that, and what we'd do with it. Then about a year later, a gentleman that lives up on Collins Road on Choystoy came to me and said, I've got an acre of property up there. He'd heard about the old school building, he said, my mother is teaching that school. If you move the school building to the property, I'll give you the good county the property as long as I can be sure that that building's going to be there for a couple of years. So we are, without SLOST, it'd be an impossibility, we just couldn't do it. So we had the mover come up, we got the price on moving the building. The only problem is the road, the building needs to go on, it's a whole lot narrower than the building is. So we've been working for six months aggressively trying to get right away, because we've got to go in and grade the banks of the road back before we can move the building. So it's going to be a great project, it's going to be, the voting precinct right now is in Firehouse, number twelve, Firehouse. And so we will move that to this building. So it'll be the voting precinct, and it'll also be a community center for that part of the county up there. And that way, the county can justify, you know, putting money into it because I think it's important, again, like the courthouse, that we restore a few old things we still got. And we hope somebody, someday somebody will look at us, that it will be worth restoring if we live long enough. Animal control, and I'm not going to ask you to speak, Helen, because we're out of time, but animal control facilities, Humane Society Shelter does a great job, and they work closely with animal control. And our animal control people utilize the shelter, and the people up there utilize, you know, to work together to have a place to put animals. They're crowded up there, they never, if you found a stray animal, you know they never have room, and this doesn't guarantee they're going to have room. But what the county's going to do, there's some property behind there that they've been able to obtain, so we're going to grade it, we're going to go in there and grade that off, take the dirt, put it behind the existing facility, build up a level pad, and be able to dry in for them, a addition to that building, which we hope will allow enough space to, you're never going to have enough space for all the animals, but that, along with the spray meter program that we're, that they're involved in, that we're having fun, we think over the next few years will certainly will make a dent in animal. And last but not least, I told you we had to go with the city, cooperate with them, and two million dollars of this money is going to the city. On a per capita basis, they would only get about one point three million, but they've got some good projects. And, you know, in Union County, the city and the county are together, and people think of us as one and the same. And we rely on their sewer services and their water, they rely on our recreation services and our fire department. So a lot of, a lot of things that work together. But they're going to have water and sewer facility expansion, street improvements and public facilities on it. They're going to try to build a public restroom in the downtown area right around the courthouse, maybe even on the courthouse grounds, because that's a problem downtown when you have a festival or Halloween event or anything else down there, is there's no public restroom. And then last, they're going to expand and renovate City Hall. So that's the list of our projects, and we think they're all worthwhile, we think they're going to be great for the county. And a big thing is, we're going to, we're going to put in this referendum a bonding mechanism. And what that means is, we're going to borrow a portion of this money upfront. This is thirty, thirty-one and a half million dollar estimate that we're going to take. We're going to bond up to, and it'll show up in the ballot, fifteen million dollars, which is just a little under half of that amount. What that will allow us to do, and we don't know if we'll bond, if we'll actually bond it all or just parts of it, or maybe do it in two phases, but that'll allow us to begin construction on this stuff sometime this year. Because the SLOST election's February the second, and even though our, even though our next SLOST doesn't actually run out until March of oh nine, with a bond, by selling bonds ahead of time, you actually borrow, borrow that money, borrow that portion of the money upfront and of course pay interest on it to the banks. But what we find out, the county's able to borrow money at such a low rate, at this point, they're estimating right now, if we did it today, we'd be in a three point seven, three point eight percent range. So the cost of materials and the cost of doing these projects is going to go up a heck of a lot more than the interest that the county's going to be paying. So two reasons, that's one of the reasons for bonding. The other reason is so that we can start and get all these jobs and get people to work, you know, try to get some jobs out here for the public to work on, and try to, try to be sure as we can that we get local people involved in as many of these projects as possible. So having said that, I am through. Do I have any questions? Let me back up, the meeting was adjourned. Now, do I have any questions? I know it's late. Thank y'all very much for coming. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry. And although I can't promote this, if you know anybody, it sounded like a good eye I did to you and you want to pass that on to somebody else, I think that's probably appropriate. and you want to pass that on to somebody else, I think that's probably appropriate.